Now, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Homewood School District 153 for February 3rd, 2025. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here?
Mrs. Feig.
Here?
Here.
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 Mr. Bob?
President.
Thank you. First, let me apologize for our late start. We're used to starting on time, but we did have a meeting prior to this and then a little technical difficulties. So, we're sorry you had to wait for us. Okay. We have approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the Board of Education from January 6th, 2025. Are there any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have future dates.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Just wanted to remind everyone in the district that next Monday, one week from today, we are not in session recognizing Lincoln's birthday. Traditionally, we have been off on President's Day, which is on the 17th, but the last couple of years, we have recognized Lincoln's birthday. So, next Monday, February 10th, we will not be here. And then, the next early release day is on February 28th. That's for staff development. And then, into March, our traditional Casimir Pulaski Day will also be closed.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, we have a great presentation tonight.
We do, we do. It's always fun to have students in attendance at the board meetings, much less for the reason that we have you here tonight. So, it's really exciting when we're able to recognize our students for great accomplishments. And, if you're not aware, the IESA, the Illinois Elementary School Association, governs middle school athletics in the state of Illinois. A lot of people are familiar with the IHSA, the High School Association. Well, this is the same thing for middle schools. And, you may not be aware, Illinois is the only state in the country that has a middle school association. So, that's kind of a cool thing. And, it's particularly special to me because I happen to sit on the Board of Directors for the IESA. So, whenever I'm sitting at those meetings, and we just had one last week, and we're able to recognize our own schools, it's a really cool thing. So, to our 8th grade girls' basketball team, all of you have your shirts on, our board has their shirts as well, in recognition of your Final Four finish. So, at this time, what I would like to do is call up the coaches, Chris Blankenship and Henry Stutley, and then they can introduce their athletes. So, if you could come to the microphone. Oh, just me, okay. All right, figures, why not? All right, so, you want to start youngest, the oldest? What are we doing here? You want to do it that way? You first? All right, all right, let's start with the captains, right? So, we'll start with Gia Tyler. Here she is. Come on, girl. All right. Our second captain was Kylie Evans. Come on. There you go. Okay? You want to do it? You got the rest of your teammates? You got this, girl. Show them how you do it.
Next, we got Mike Hill. And next, we have Lynn. And next, we have Taja. And next, we have Kendalyn. And, and next, we have Skylar.
We are missing a few of them, right? A couple kids aren't here. One of them had a volleyball game, a couple other kids just couldn't get here on time. But, we appreciate what these girls did. Obviously, you can tell, we only have two 8th graders, right? Of all the girls that were competing at 8th grade state, so that tells you that next year, right, the back half of them, and Gavin, and a couple of the other ones, will all be returning. So, hopefully, next year, oh, wait, 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 wait. There we are. Maybe a little bit quicker.
Let's clap first.
Come on, girl. Come on, girl. Come on. Sarai Henderson, late entry. Here we go. Come on, come on. Put the phone down. It's okay. Come on, come on. Come on, girl. There you are. Everyone wants to clap for you. Come on, come on, come on. We'll make a spot for you. There you go, girl. But, for real, they really did have a great season. It wasn't off to a good start, but really, all that matters is how they ended. And they ended very strong. Now, we have some things to work on, right? And we've already started a couple things together, so hopefully, next year, we'll be back here again, maybe with a bigger trophy or a better number on it. But, to be honest, this is the first time the girls have ever put a banner on the wall. We're really proud to say that their names are going to be there. Seriously, you guys were an absolute pain, but I couldn't be happier. I honestly could not be happier to say that we did this together, right? I mean, speak for yourself, but, okay? It is how it is. So, we love these girls. We really appreciate what they did. The parents, we really appreciate how much you support us, right? It really makes a difference to Henry and I, because without you guys and us being all on the same page, it's difficult to discipline them, it's difficult to get them in check, it's difficult to make them do what they want. And they're your teenage girls, and you understand as much as I understand. And we need you guys as much as anything else on earth. So, please, thank you for what you do. We look forward to next year, but more importantly, we need to celebrate them, and we hope we can send them out on the right note, especially these three girls, right, who won't be back to see what we do next time. So, thank you for having us. Thank you for celebrating us, but more importantly, please celebrate them and all the things that they do. Mr. Blankenship, before you go back to sit, we'd love to get a picture with the trophies and everybody together. Ms. Peck, are you able to come up?
Grab them. Well, there's three trophies.
There's three trophies.
There you go. So, Gia, take the big one. Give one to the other.
Come on, guys. You got your shirts on. You got your team on.
Now, let's act like we know what we're doing here. We're going to squeeze everybody together.
Will we all do it? Okay.
Oh, you want us to be back?
I'm just going to squeeze.
Watch this.
I don't mind sitting.
I'll just go right here. If that's what we're doing. We can put some of the taller ones in the back. Yeah, Rodrick, if you want to slide in there.
Great job, Coach. Great job.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Good.
coaching to, as Mr. Blankenship said, pull together a group of teenage girls to work towards one, one goal. And we're really proud of you. And Dr. McAllister and I drove down to see you play in that game, and we both were so proud that you were representing James Hart and Homewood, because you guys did a great job on the court and off the court of being fine representatives of our school and our community. You were smiling, you were having fun, but you wanted to get something done there. And we're really, really proud of all of you. And, again, to the parents, we can't do this without your support, and we appreciate that you're in there, helping out the girls, making sure they're maintaining their grades, because they can't play if they don't do that, and pushing both academics and their athletic endeavors. So, thank you all. And, we also want you to know that while you are all welcome to stay for the entire board meeting, our feelings will not be hurt if you feel like there's something else you would rather be doing right now. So, we'll give you a minute or two to make that important decision, and then we'll move on with our board meeting.
I mean, you can go. I'm sorry? If you'd like to take them, you certainly, oh, yeah. They'll be, yeah. They'll be.
No.
Do you have school next Monday?
Yeah.
No.
That's Lincoln's birthday.
No school all week from today.
February 10th, no school.
What's your tone? You get to come out because of your fourth grade. Final Four, right?
I know, I know. Got to love them.
Celebration of Final Four.
Yes, exactly. Important question.
Did I clean that one?
You're welcome. Thank you. If there is anyone in the audience who has come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda, this is the time to do it, and we would ask you to come on up to the microphone and tell us your name, your address, and we give you three minutes to speak to us. So, is there anyone who has come to address the board on any? Come on up.
Hello, how are all of you?
Great.
My name's Sherri Foster. I live in Hazel Crest, 2715 Norwood. I have a daughter, I have two daughters within the district. I'm here to discuss about the special educations currently at Churchill School. To provide a brief summary of what occurred, my daughter, and I had a meeting with Dr. McAllister. My daughter has an IEP. She has a documented developmental delay. And, long story short, she was sent back to class with a broken finger, and I was not given a phone call home. I am called for any and everything else in regards to her budding someone in class, her twiddling her hair, things of that nature. However, no phone call home was given. Initially, I presented the topic, thinking that there needed to be a change agent in regards to policies and procedures, in regards to notifying parents when there are accidents at school, that possibly could warrant further investigation, possibly a higher level of care, so to speak. But now, after doing some further research, I've found out the entire education, special education department within the district needs reform. Beginning with the qualifications that the teachers that are teaching our students do not possess, it has been brought to my attention that one of the teachers is currently teaching as a permanent sub nurse. Excuse me. Well, let's take it back a little bit. So, for instance, like, when there are substitute teachers that come to the classroom to teach for teachers that are not there, they have an outline in regards to what they want the students to learn for the day. I posed the question, is there such a thing that nurses have for when students come to the nurse's office for things of that nature? And the answer was no. I was given a policy and procedure in regards to if you have a cold, a fever, runny nose, things of that sort. So, there is none. Also, in regards to students that have an IEP, that have a communication barrier, how does a nurse, or anyone for that matter, advocate for that student when they cannot advocate for themselves? I originally offered my free time to assess this, and I, to assess this area in need of opportunity for improvement. However, there has been no traction in regards to that. Due to this abundance of new information that I found out, like I said, the entire special education needs reform. Initially, why was there no transparency in regards to the teachers that do not have the certain qualifications and education to teach special education students? The regression that I have seen from my child, as well as speaking to other moms in the community, there is a huge gap and a huge difference in regards from the transition from Willow to Churchill School. My next question is, were the correct tools given to this teacher that do not possess the appropriate qualifications, was she set up for success? Does she have a master teacher that possibly is needed in the classroom because she does not have the qualifications? Was she set up for failure?
We need you to wrap it up.
Okay. From my understanding, there needs to be a master teacher for teaching special education, also an LBS-1. And from my understanding, the teachers, not just in 3rd grade, but throughout the district, do not possess this, beginning in preschool, 3rd grade, 4th grade, 5th grade. And also, I want to discuss the busing situation. Our bus service attendant has not been there, and there has been a sub for him. It has been brought to my attention that the buses have been asking the special education students, what is your address? Basically, asking a student that we all know have an IEP, mine specifically communication barriers. How are you going to ask a child, what is her address to get home? Here, that's the conversation again. What are we leaving for people that are stepping in, in the absence thereof, to make sure that these special kids are well taken care of? So, these are all the questions that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Yes, come on up, please.
Hello, Mr. McAllister.
Hi.
I am Kate Atkins Trimnall. My son is actually now a senior at HF, and I really appreciate the support that I got from Mr. McAllister while Ewan was here. But, I actually came because I saw Sherri's note on the HF Parents page. And, I am very concerned, even though my son is no longer here, about special education. My son had a very mixed bag within your district. And there were challenges at one point, when a teacher looked at me and said, "I just don't know how to teach your son." And I wish I had had the courage to say, "Well, can't you find some support?" But, the sad thing is, I'm still hearing the same thing, all these years later. And, and that concerns me greatly, because we actually had to pull Ewan out of this district and take him to New Lennox. And that was quite a challenge. And now, my son is thriving at HF. He is a member of the Fine Arts Academy, but his best year in your district was 2nd grade, I believe. And that's a pretty sad commentary, and it's sad to hear that this kind of stuff is still going on. I have a letter that I have given to his teachers, and I'm going to update it and provide Mr. McAllister with a copy, and the principals, even though they're different people, different players, at Churchill and at Willow, and the principal now here at James Hart, hoping that it will not fall on deaf ears, and that another child will not have to go through what my son went through in your school district, which necessitated us pulling him out and taking him to New Lennox until he could come back here. And, I would, I had another thought, but actually, I'm getting a headache, so I guess I'm really tense about this. But I hope that you will be able to make it better for other kids, and I hope no parent will have to have a teacher stare at them and say, "I don't know how to teach your son." If a child has an IEP, it behooves the people in these schools to figure out how to teach our kids. And I guess that's my key point.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has come tonight to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Mallory Cammon. My address is 1216 Birch Road. I am neighbors with Kate. I'm here to voice some concerns for special education. My son is at Willow. And, I too, am going to echo Sherri's concern with the transition from Willow to Churchill, as I've heard not so many good experiences from parents. I feel like there needs to be more in-depth transition for the kids who have IEPs. I also want to ask if the school district is able to provide a space for parents to come and meet, like a support group. There are many parents, including myself, who feel that we need more support, just to be able to meet and talk about our experiences, so that we can be better parents for our students, and so that we can have better communication with our teaching staff. So, that's pretty much all. Allow us space, maybe like, once a month, once every other two weeks. It could be at Willow, or it could be at Churchill, someplace for the parents to meet. And if there are the special education department, if they want to have representative there to just facilitate or see what's going on, so that we can all be in constant communication with each other. Because, the point of being a parent in education, or in education, is to support the students so that they can thrive outside of, you know, their first handful of years in public education. So, that's all I'm asking for.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else who has come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's Okay, we'll move on. Thank you all. We appreciate your comments. Okay, do we have any responses to comments raised at previous meetings?
Do not.
And, do we have any board members who have any reports from committee meetings you've attended?
Personnel did meet, but those items are on the agenda for later on to address, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Finance and property met in January, and we talked about financial, updated financial status. There are also items on tonight's agenda regarding increases for FYI 26 for district staff and administrative staff. We also talked about some construction updates that are going to take place this summer, in particular, at Willow School, with the roof and windows as well. So, Ron or Christine, if you have anything else to add?
Great, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have the superintendent's report.
Yes. Good evening, once again. I did want to follow up with our girls' basketball team, who advanced to the Final Four. We also have our boys' 8th grade basketball team, who is competing in the regional tournament this week. They won their first game, and they play again on Wednesday, and hopefully, Thursday. So, they're in the same process that our girls went through, as they advanced to the Final Four. So, best of luck to them. You know, several of our speakers, our guests this evening, talked about special education, and I just wanted to point out, PTA had their winter meeting this past week, and the topic was specifically related to special education. So, there were probably about 30 people in attendance. It was very well attended. Melanie Mandy Sodes, our director, was there. C.C. Baloo, our assistant director, was there, and I was there. And, basically, we talked about the process, what special ed entails. And, it's a, it's a challenge, as many parents have attested, because A, special education is incredibly complex, there's a lot of layers to it, and you have an audience, such as what we had the other night, where the knowledge level between participants can vary greatly. You have some parents who are very new to the special education process, so even, even explaining, for example, and I said this the other night, we're very famous in education for our acronyms, right? Like, we talk all the time about MTSS and RTI, MDRs, and, and we just assume that people know. And certainly, some of our parents know, right? They've been through that process, they understand those terms. And others, being new, don't. So, it's a challenge to try to make sure you're educating everyone who's in front of you, while not talking down to those who are very familiar with terms, and also helping those who aren't. But, I thought overall, the meeting went 90 minutes, and quite honestly, we, we had to cut it, just because the evening was running late. It could have gone longer. But I think it echoes many of the comments that we heard here this evening. You know, concerns from parents, education being provided, but also an opportunity, you know, to your point, an opportunity for parents who are all in the collective vote of having students with IEPs or 504s, to, you know, collaborate and share ideas. And I, and I thought, you know, Marilyn was there, there were several people in the audience who, who were in attendance. I thought it was a very good, positive, informative meeting. Most importantly, though, what I took from that was, A, it was needed, but also, we should do that earlier, right? So, certainly, planning for next year, as we talk about doing something similar to kick off the school year, to make sure that our families can start with that knowledge base. But then again, the suggestions that have been presented, what can we do to better educate all of our families on an ongoing basis? So, please know that, you know, the fact that you're here, you can look around, right? The fact that you came and chose to give up your evening to speak to us, shows that you care about your children, right? And that's, as a district, as somebody who works in education, the administrators who are in the back, the teachers who are in the back, all we can ask for is supportive, caring parents. And you clearly are, right? So, thank you for that. Our job, of course, is to work with you to provide the best education we can for our kids. And just know that we'll continue to work and address those things as they come up. With regard specifically to staffing, you know, it's no secret that staffing in education is challenging. Many of the people at the table here, board members, work in education, albeit in different districts, and it's difficult everywhere. Special education, of all the areas in education, special education is the most difficult to staff, without question. So, what the state of Illinois has done is created, for lack of a better term, alternate certification programs, where they allow people who are interested in becoming certified special education teachers to enroll in these programs, albeit in a different route than perhaps some of our special educators who are here in the audience tonight, might have gone through 20 years ago. So, I want to assure all of our families that they are in state-approved programs. That said, they are working toward their license under those conditions. So, with regard to the question about mentorship, all of our new teachers do get mentors. And that's, that's certainly important. There's no doubt that anybody who is new in a position, whether it's being a new superintendent, or being a new special education teacher, or a new anything, you know, to have somebody that's done that job before is very helpful. So, all of our staff, we do have a nice mentorship program for all of our new staff. But that's just a little bit, but I, again, I just appreciate the presence of those who spoke tonight, and, and also, as a follow-up to the meeting that we had last week, I just feel like there's a lot that we can glean from that as an administrative staff, and also learn from our parents and help educate our parents. The last thing I wanted to mention with my report was, oh, yes. So, this past week, I've sent out a couple of district-wide emails to our, to our families, our staff and our families, regarding what has been a preponderance of information coming from the federal level, and impacting a lot of different areas, education being one of them. I think perhaps most telling was one that our state Superintendent of Education, Tony Sanders, sent out to all 852 Illinois school districts. And it basically said, "You've been getting a lot of information, a lot of things in the news, a lot of executive orders, but at this point, nothing has changed in the state of Illinois. There's, there's been no mandate, no laws that have been changed as a result of what you've heard in the media." So, it was more an assurance from our state leader that, right now, nothing is different, and we're continuing with what we have been doing. So, my correspondence to our families was the same, right? Please know the values that we in this district respect for all of our kids, and that we're going to continue to advocate for all of our kids and families. I don't want to make this a political conversation, but I do think we also have values that we need to stand on. And so, really, that's, that's what my message to families was. All of you were copied on those correspondences as well. But just know that we will continue to, to advocate for kids. That's, that's why we got into the profession. And if anything were to change legally with regard to mandates, you know, we, we will publicize that accordingly.
And I want to add to that. Our mission statement, in case you're unfamiliar with it, is "All children will learn, all children will be served." And, I just want to reaffirm that we believe that, and that that's what we stand on, and that we will take care of all children to the very best of our ability, all the time, every day. And we're, we care about what our kids come to school with, their social, emotional needs, as well as their educational needs, and we will do everything in our power to meet all of those needs. Okay, we're going to move on to consent agenda items. We need We need to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for March 2025. We also have a personnel report?
Yes, we do. As we do each month, there are several items in there regarding leaves. But I want to make a big announcement, if you will, regarding staffing, and that is in our curriculum office. So, all of you at this table are aware, our director of curriculum, Kathy Schaefflein, who is seated in the back, will be retiring in four short months, Kathy. Four months, my goodness. And how long have you been in that position? 13 years as the director of curriculum. So, Kathy will be dearly missed. But nonetheless, we need to move on and plan for the future after Kathy. So, I'm excited to let everyone know, you know, both of our chairs here talked about their committee meetings. We talked about what is going to be the plan for our curriculum office moving forward. And we are really fortunate to have two incredibly talented, hard-working, knowledgeable, loyal people who've been in our district a long time and have shown that they are more than up to the task of continuing the great work and building upon that in our curriculum office. So, I'm asking tonight for your approval to appoint Morgan Consul as the new director of curriculum for the district. Morgan has worked here in this district 14 years and elsewhere, four years. So, nearly 20 years in education. She has multiple degrees and most recently has served as our director of English learning and grants for the past seven years. Morgan is a really, really talented person, has a reading specialist background. So, we're excited to have her move into that role. And then also, another person who has been working in the curriculum office very closely with Kathy and Morgan in a non-administrative role, but we are, I am recommending her moving into an administrative capacity, and that's Catherine Zarnicky, moving into a director of instructional support and assessment role. So, again, Catherine has had a lot of contact with our teaching staff in all three buildings. They probably know her from the district office as well as any of our employees because she is constantly out there working with teachers. So, we're excited about them moving into those positions in the midst of being sad that Kathy is moving out. But certainly, Kathy has earned that retirement. So, that's part of the personnel report, along with Connor Norfleet in a custodial position. And again, there's several leaves. I also want to point out, this is the season, it's not the last, but it's the season where people start to notify us of intent to retire. And so, there were three people who notified me of their intent to retire, two of which, I'm sorry, one of which is this year, one is next year, and then one is three years down the road. So, you will see Chris Ingles' name with her intent to retire this year. Chris has been in the district 37 years. I said to Chris, and Chris is not, I mean, I don't want to bring age into this, Chris is not in what you would think of as an older person. But Chris started teaching here when I graduated high school. And so, that kind of puts it in perspective how long Chris Ingles has been, not only in education, but in District 153. Tremendous, tremendous educator, and we're really going to miss her. And then Sharon Perry, who is the director, I'm sorry, the school psychologist at James Hart. School psychs are incredibly hard to find. They play an integral role in special education. So, we're really sad that Sharon will be leaving us at the end of next year. And then Barb Van Etten, a first-grade teacher at Willow, has put in for retirement effective 2028. So, we're fortunate to have three more years with Barb. But again, Barb is an outstanding teacher who many, many people in our district know and respect. So, those are all personnel. You also have in your packet approval of district office and administrator salaries for those who are not on retirement contracts. So, these are all one-year contracts. And again, we met and talked about those in committee. Those are the highlights.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions on the bills, paying like bills for March 2025, or the personnel report from the board, from the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in items 7A and 7B.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Epstein.
Mrs. Stoll.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Mrs. Morris.
Yes. Motion carries. We have several action agenda items tonight. The first is the second payment of January 2025 bills and the first payment of February 2025 bills. Are there any questions on the bills, from the board, from the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education authorize the second payment of January 2025 bills and the first payment of February 2025 bills, the amount not to exceed $2,520,363.30.
Correction on the amount.
Sorry.
$393 instead of $363.
What did I say?
He said $363.
Okay, not to exceed $2,520,393.30.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. We have the approval of the 2025-2026 school calendar.
Yes, always an exciting time for families and staff to find out what their next school year looks like. The process to adopt a calendar involves numerous meetings with many people. That's the easiest way to put it. So, there was a staff, staff and administrator committee of about 15 people who worked on multiple renditions. I think this is draft H is the one that you have in front of you as the final one to approve. And then, we show this to the administrative staff, make sure it works for them. But I just want all of our families to know, it's never easy when you're crafting a calendar, not only because we have to work with a high school district that is a different district. They create their own calendar. We certainly do try to coordinate as much as possible for holidays, winter break, spring break, et cetera, and some of the other days off. But then, the other thing, we need to find time for our teachers to meet. And right now, we only have two after-school meetings. One is a staff meeting, one is a curriculum meeting, and that is not nearly enough time for them to meet. So, we embed within our calendar early-release days. And I know that those are an imposition on families. Like, there's just no other way to put it. But I also want you to know that that time is valuable to us and it is needed to us. So, we reduce the number of early-release days by one from this current school year calendar. So, next year, we have one less early-release day. But the highlights, school will start for teachers August 18th. That's the third week. That is one week after HF, and traditionally, it has been. The last day of school under this calendar is May 29th. So, we actually finish in May. And, you know, every year, there are required number of student attendance days, 174. There are four Teacher Institute days. There are two Parent-Teacher Conference days. Those are all state-mandated. So, what you have is the calendar that the committee created, and we're asking for your approval tonight.
Great. Any questions from the board on the calendar? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the 2025 through 2026 school calendar as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Snick.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. We have approval of life safety bond sale resolution.
Yes, I will invite our chief school business official, Dr. Trimberger, to come talk some of the details on the bond sale, as well as the window bid, which is the next action agenda item.
So, we've been talking about the life safety bonds for a couple of months now. So, we went through with the parameters today, and we are selling $2,790,000 in bonds paid over two years with a interest rate of 3.85%. So, these will incur $133,753 in interest, and we have an issuing cost of $26,500. So, in light of where interest rates are today, superintendent and I are quite pleased to have a rate under 4% on this bond sale. And again, these proceeds will be used to pay for the roofing work at Willow School this summer. So, without this bond sale, we would have struggled to be able to complete that project.
Great. Any questions from the board, from the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education approve the resolution providing for the issue of approximately $2,820,000 general obligation school bonds, Series 2025 of the district for the purpose of altering and reconstructing school buildings and purchasing and installing equipment therein for fire prevention and safety, energy conservation, and school security purposes, providing for the levy of a district annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. We need to award Willow window replacement bid.
Yes, so, we talked about this. This is being done in conjunction with the roofing work this summer at Willow School. These are the windows that are at the rough line. So, we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting on January 21st. That was, four companies attended. Three companies submitted bids, and the low bid was from Kroll Window Company in the amount of $435,229. And the bid includes an allowance of $36,000. So, if the allowance is unused, then they will do a deductive change order at the end of the project. I've used Kroll at another district. They're a reputable company, so we're quite pleased with this price. And we also did apply for a $50,000 school maintenance grant from the Illinois State Board of Education for this project, which we have been awarded, so $50,000 of the project will come from the grant from the state.
Great, thank you for finding that grant. Any questions from the board? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education award the Willow restory. Claristry. Okay, I believe you. Window replacement bid to Kroll Window Company from Oaklawn, Illinois, in amount not to exceed, I must be careful because Alex is listening,
Second.
Is there a motion to approve? Ouch, is there a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Someone, did I miss that, too?
Yeah, me.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. We have employment.
Yes, one item on the employment. That is Kellen Norfleet, evening custodian at James Hart.
Great. Any questions? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approve the employment of Kellen Norfleet effective January 14th, 2025, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent, conditioning only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report and upon receipt no later than February 14th, 2025, of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the position to be filled.
Second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Do we have any discussion items tonight?
Do not.
Is there any written communication to the board, Mr. Secretary?
There is not.
Thank you. We do have a need for an executive session to discuss superintendent employment. We will return only to adjourn. Is there such a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Thank you all for coming tonight. We are going into executive session.